Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 14.
Recording in progress.
I'm going to call the RTM meeting to order. It is 7:01. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the roll, please?
I wouldn't mind at all.
We better say something if they're going to record.
Representative Oprey, we're starting the meeting.
Representative Adams?
Here.
Ambrois? I saw you online. Ambrois is online and so is Bailey. Burrell?
Here.
Say again.
You're here, Mr. Representative Bailey. I see you and Ambrois also. Brennan? Bright?
Here.
Casper is not here. Surf? Chase?
Here.
Crockett Hubbard? Dean Shinbrot? Eben? Frickman?
Here.
Fritchie? I see you. I see you, Representative Fritchie. Okay, he's here.
Here. Ambrois is here.
Yep, I got you. Gardner? Gothier? Gibbs?
Are they here?
She's here. Gibbs is here?
Here.
Yep, Gusterson?
Here.
Hanline? Hanscom? Ivy? Kayden?
Here.
Massett? I see you.
Here.
Okay. McAllery?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Norman? Oprey? Perry?
Here.
Yep. K. Powers?
Here.
S. Powers?
Present.
Pacino?
Here.
Scott? Cimarrero?
Here.
Thomas? V.C. Williams? Watson?
Present.
Weaver? Wells?
Here.
Whitney?
Here.
And Russ?
Here.
That's 23 present.
Thank you. We could all stand for a moment of silence in this salute to the flag, please.
Bailey, here.
Representative Adams, would you mind leading us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you all. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the special meeting, the annual budget meeting minutes. I'll take them.
Take the motion.
That was made by Representative Sean Powers and seconded by Representative Adams. Are there any changes or corrections? I did find one.
Lots of stuff. So if it's just typos or something like that, I know there was a vote.
Is anybody here?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Are you in jail?
No, because everybody was muted.
Do you have a correction for the minute?
I also don't see the town staff or the senior senator at all. I just see the gallery here, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. Guys, if you can wait one moment, we are in the middle of approving the minutes for the annual meeting, the annual budget meeting.
We've got nothing going.
Yeah.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Now, yes.
Yes, you can hear us, okay.
We can now.
So there was a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for the annual budget.
Madam Moderator.
Al, excuse me there.
Representative Ambrois?
I can't hear the staff talking.
The only person talking is me so far. Can you hear me talking?
Can I hear the staff?
Sweet voice.
I can, thanks, Rep. Oprey.
Okay. I'm going to make one note on page six. I had sent this to the clerk under 10900, City of Groton Police. It says the motion was made by Representative Gardner. It was actually Representative Gothier. Are there any other corrections? Representative Watson?
I'm sorry, we now can see you. We couldn't see you at one point. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other corrections to the annual budget meeting minutes? Seeing none, those are approved as amended. Next up is the RTM, May 10, 2023, regular meeting minutes for approval. Representative Adams, seconded by Representative Chase. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they will stand as written. Thank you. We are at public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the gallery or online who wish to speak from the public? All right, seeing none, we will move on to receipt of communications. I will start with this really quickly. We did get a resignation from Jackie Kopp, who is District 7. She moved out of the district or out of Groton. So if there are any Democrats interested in District 7, please contact the town clerk. We received communications from Lynn Crockett Hubbard, Autumn Hanscom, Susan Dean Shinbrot, Susan Hanline, Clarence Casper, Emily Norman, Neil Gardner, and Ann Thomas that they were not able to make it tonight. There was an email that went out regarding the Fourth of July Parade. If anybody in the RTM is interested in being in the Fourth of July Parade, please let your floor leaders know or let Betsy know, and she will let you know more information. You didn't get the email?
No.
Did it only go out to floor leaders, maybe?
No.
I don't know. I can check that. That was quite a while ago.
Okay, we'll get that sent out to everybody. And the Parks and Rec Master Plan is going to be presented on June 28 at the Annex Building at 6:30. All are welcome to that in the RTM and in the public. Are there any other communications? Seeing none.
This is Representative Gibbs.
Yes.
This is where we read letters from constituents, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I received an email from Judith Treadway, and she writes, "Hello, I'm a resident in your district. I want to bring your attention to bring to your attention a dangerous intersection at Farmstead and Rhonda Drive. It is a three-way stop, but one sign, one stop sign is completely covered by an adjacent tree shrub bush. The tree shrub bush should be trimmed or the sign moved. Car drivers don't see the stop sign and plow right through the intersection, which is used by many pedestrians and dog walkers. Also, the stop sign is, the stop sign at the corner of Farmstead and Judson is very old and faded and should be replaced. Thank you for your attention to these issues that affect the residents in your district."
Can you please forward that email to the town manager and to the moderator and the town clerk? And then we will have that go to the traffic authority?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's probably not.
Or Public Works.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
But we don't know until we know. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, can you say the name of the roads again?
It's Farmstead and Rhonda Drive, the intersection there. And I did drive over there, and I agree with her that the stop sign's covered until you get pretty close to it, so it's hard to see.
Farmstead and what?
Rhonda.
Rhonda Drive. Okay. We will find it. Okay, any other communications? Town manager, do you have a report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. First, the financial report. As of May 31, 23, is the fund balance is approximately $31.5 million, which is 22.1% of the FYE 23 general fund adopted budget. General contingency budget for FYE 23 was appropriated at $300,000, current balance of $93,400 after transfers pending RTM approval. As of May 31, 23, the following transfers have been made: $9,500 for public safety, $4,100 for the City of Groton, $500 for Groton Long Point, and, oh, these are the ones under the fourth quarter, sorry. The only ones that get approved, though, by the RTM is the legal services, $192,500. And then our capital reserve fund is at $1.16 million. Let's see. The budget, the adopted budget, is now online, so it's now officially complete. Went online yesterday. So if you go into the Finance Department online, you can find the reports there. Let's see. I don't know if it's been in the paper yet. I think it probably has been out there, but the Thames River Magnet School, that we end up getting a higher reimbursement rate. Originally, we're going to get, from the state, a reimbursement rate of 47%. It's now been up to 57.5%. What that means is we won't have to bond for about $4.1 million, so it's, you know, we don't have to spend as much in the future, so that's great. Great news. Let's see. If you notice for a long, for quite a while now, that pavilion that's over by South Road, our pavilion over in that area by the river there, the roof's been gone for a while. We are now replacing it. It's making good progress. Haven't looked at it in a couple of days, so maybe, I'm not sure where it's at right now. And that's really all I have, if I can answer any questions.
Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Representative Powers.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can we all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Monday, June 5, 2023, we had a Finance Committee meeting, Representatives Powers, Chase, Fritchie, Massett, Gardner, Norman, and Scott. 7:04, we called to order, and Chase, Fritchie, Massett, Gardner, Powers were present. Norman and Scott were excused. Manager Burt was also present with us. We discussed the new business, 2023-257 FYE fourth quarter transfer. A motion was made by Chairman Powers, seconded by Representative Chase, to read into the minutes the resolution of the fourth quarter transfers. Discussion was with Manager Burt, the reasons behind the transfer, the legal bills associated with the costs, the increases and decreases of the cost centers, the appraisal appeals, the FOIA complaints, the labor negotiations, and for contracts and arbitrations. Chairman Powers called for a vote. Five were in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Motion passed. Representative Fritchie made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Chase. We adjourned at 7:26 PM. I so moved the minutes.
Is there a second? Representative Chase seconded. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, those will be approved. Do you want to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution for FYE 2023 fourth quarter transfers. Whereas the town charter provided for supplemental appropriations to adopt budgets and transfers from the contingency functions during the year, and whereas the town charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one department function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year, and whereas transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at time, the FYE 2023 budget was adopted. Now, therefore be it resolved that the transfer totaling $14,111 be transferred from contingency account 1094 to the following general fund departments and functions. Public safety, $9,500. Unexpected personal expenses related to the Gold Star Bridge accident. City of Groton, $4,100. Utility increases for city streetlights. Groton Long Point, $500 for utilities increases for GLP streetlights. And further resolve the transfer totaling $192,500 be transferred from contingency to the following general fund department functions and refer to the RTM for approval legal services of $192,500 for increase in FOIA, labor, collective bargaining, and assessments.
Okay. So the number you are moving is?
$192,500.
Back in. Ambrois.
So the motion was made by Representative Sean Powers, seconded by Representative Chase. Are there any questions? Can, Manager Burt, can you please just go over what the unexpected personnel, was it police and fire for the Gold Star Bridge accident?
There was, that little bit of police was for, not that this goes through the approval here, but yeah, the little bit was for police specifically, the Gold Star Bridge.
Okay.
And then the largest increase you see, if you look at page 26 of the packet, you'll see a comparison of 22 to 23 bills. Labor by far is the biggest increase year to year. We have four contracts up, plus you could have grievances or mediations. There's a lot of things that can fall in a year randomly too under labor. Miscellaneous, just so everyone knows, and I'd like to think of a better title for it, but it's council opinions, town manager opinion when we reach out for opinions, town manager, council, RTM, and ABCs. So it's the bodies in need that ask for opinions, and that is down a little bit. For instance, your self-rescription right now is working with attorneys on redoing their leases. There's a lot of that stuff that's always going on, so.
Representative Oprey.
Yes, I was just wondering, on the FOIA increase, what do we normally have for billing on that, a rough idea?
I'd say what you see under 22 is probably about what it usually is, in that $5,000 range, maybe even a little less, $3,000 to $5,000, I'd actually say. This is because of several FOIA complaints that went to the FOIA Commission. So that's the reason for the increase. Because once you have an actual FOIA complaint, if you can't resolve it in mediation, it goes to, you actually have to go to Hartford, well, attorneys have to prepare with you. You have to go to Hartford and present, and then sometimes even a follow-up at the full commission, so it can be fairly time consumptive.
Okay, so this wasn't just from somebody asking for information?
No, no, nothing like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I will say, I will say, Madam Moderator, this, we had way more FOIs this year than I've ever seen, not just typical, you know, questions about what government does, but what contracts are, what's buried in the ground, that kind of stuff. It's just been bizarre, really. I've never seen so many.
Okay, the number on the floor is 192, I'm sorry, hold on. $192,500 in a fourth quarter transfer. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, if you could, lower your hands online, please. Is there anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Then that motion passes, 23 to 0, to 0. Are there any liaison reports? I went for you, and I didn't bring my notes with me. Oh, you're wonderful, thank you. Representative Chase.
Okay, Groton Public, let's see, Town Council, City Council, RTM, Board of Ed, Liaison Committee, Special Meeting Minutes, June 1, 2023, 5:00 PM. Meeting was called to order at 5:06 PM. In attendance, Town Council, from the Town Council was Counselor Juliet Parker, Counselor Edward Jacobe. City Council was Counselor Chris Piazza. Board of Education was Chair Kim Shepherdson Watson. Board of Ed member Andrea Ackerman, she arrived at 5:19. RTM attendees were Moderator Jill Rusk and Representative Gary Wells. Sent from the Central Office was Assistant Superintendent Philip Piazza. Juliet Parker made a motion to accept the January 12, 2023 minutes, motion seconded by Kim Shepherdson Watson. No corrections were made, motion passed unanimously. Board of Education report, Phil Piazza. Numerous ceremonies held in the end of May. IB diploma ceremony, 6/2/23. Retirement ceremonies and end-of-year concerts coming soon. Eighth grade promotion, 6/8/23. Last day for students, 6/14/23. Graduation, 6/16/23 at 6:00 PM. Kim Shepherdson Watson. In negotiations with power union, will learn soon about legislative implications, funded and unfunded mandates, K-3 reading program mandate filed for a waiver as district is doing a more comprehensive program. Hoping to invite state reps to a joint COW in August to discuss how new laws impact the town. Recommendation to change age to start kindergarten from turning five on December 1 to turning five on September 1. Passed the House, sent to the Senate. Discussion of need of improvements to field, fieldhouse, and bleachers at Fitch House School, part of a larger fields project. Culinary arts room. Kim requested Mayor Melendez initiate a committee to start work towards improving the room, look at improvements to the program. Discussion in Groton being a distressed community, 49% of Groton students qualify for free or reduced lunch. What conversation do we need to have to serve a distressed community? Chris Piazza asked about timeframe for possible change in kindergarten, not yet passed, would not go into effect this school year. Gary Wells expressed support of improvements to the culinary program. Town Council report, Juliet Parker. Set mill rate, property reuse committee, Neighborhood Assistance Act hearing, extended town manager's contract, Office of Development and Planning Services update on position, established an art commission, one town counselor and five residents to be appointed. Those interested should contact the town clerk's office. Instituted two new rule changes. TVCCA discussed issues with housing, schooling, decrease in census numbers, senior concerns, decrease in SNAP benefits. Those in need can apply for energy assistance. Juneteenth ceremony, June 20 at 3:00 PM. City Council report, Chris Piazza. Budget complete, Freeman's meeting was June 5. They talked about ARPA funding, economic development, working on resiliency, farmers' market back outside on June 13. Concerts in the park start June 16. Discussion of fireworks at City Day. Memorial benches placed in city. Juneteenth celebration, June 17 at 11:00 AM at Memorial Building. Pride event today. Discussion on youth involvement on boards, commissions, youth advisory committee, and looking into murals. RTM report, Jill Rusk. Reviewed and passed the Town Council budget with no changes, looking at fourth quarter transfers. New business next meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 5 at 5:00 PM, hosted by Town Council. Motion to adjourn made by Dr. Ackerman, seconded by Juliet Parker. Motion passed unanimously. Meeting ended at 5:52 PM.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Representative Chase? Any other? Oh, Representative Massett? Oh, you're muted.
Okay. My question is, what is the rationale behind asking the town mayor to form a committee to look at the fieldhouse problems? That, in my opinion, that blurs the line. It should be strictly a Board of Education issue?
I think, I haven't been involved in that. However, during the budget process, I believe the Board of Ed members asked, I think Kim Watson had asked for the mayor to form something so they could talk about how to fund something in the future. So I think that, I think it was at their request.
I believe it was, yeah, it was definitely by the Board of Ed request. I believe it was just kind of to get the discussion going on how are we as a town going to fund this in the future, because it's a lot of money. So I think it was, I think that was the rationale behind it, but we can probably find out a better answer to that.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other liaison reports? All right, moving on. Any budget discussion? Anything anybody wants to ask about? All right, any other business? Oh, okay.
I just wanted to piggyback on Representative Chase's report on the joint meeting, because she mentioned the Performing Arts Commission, is it Commission? Commission, that was just newly formed. That's five seats. We're, we need to look for people that are interested in performing arts. It's not just, you know, on stage, it's also music and art, you know, drawing and poetry. You know, there's a whole, whole world of art that's out there, and so think about yourselves or people that you know. We really should fill that. And there's another one that's very interesting. It's called the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. That's newly formed also. Actually, it was back in February, but it's just not gaining ground. You know, we're peddling as fast as we can, pardon the pun, but we only have two people that have volunteered, and they were involved in the advisory, the committee that was looking at the mobility of the town, and this is an offshoot from that. So again, those are two. We have quite a few boards and commissions that need people, but we don't have any dangers. These can't even get up and meet because they don't have any, you know, not even a quorum of people. So I'll send out flyers that I've designed that I haven't gotten approval, but nobody's crickets, you know?
So it's the Performance Arts Committee, and that's?
Performing Arts Commission.
Performing Arts Commission?
Yep.
And that needs five people?
Yep.
And that is anyone within the town of Groton?
Yes.
Okay.
Registered to vote.
Registered, oh, that have to be registered to vote?
They all have to be.
Okay. And you can get registered to vote if you are not registered to vote yet?
That's true.
And the Complete Streets Advisory?
Advisory Committee.
Committee, okay. And how many people?
It's five, but the council will be appointing the chair. I believe one counselor will also serve. I don't know if, that won't continue, this is just to get it going.
Okay. So we are looking for people for at least those two committees? Other committee openings are online?
Yeah, the listing is, it's hard to find everything, but you know, there is a listing of vacancies under our boards and commissions.
Okay.
It has everything on there.
Representative Chase.
Thank you. Can you, when you send the email out, can you send a, like, a job descriptions type of thing, so that people know?
I can send the resolution.
What it entails?
Yep, I can send the resolution, and then, you know, I think that as far as the Performing Arts, that's something that's going to have to be developed within that committee, but, you know, because the way the resolution's written, it's pretty broad, so, but I'll send the resolution to both of those, the street?
For the Complete Streets also?
And the Performing Arts.
And I actually put a news item on our website yesterday for the Complete Streets. So if you go to our main page in our news, you'll see some information there. I posted it on Facebook, yeah, a couple of days ago too, or yesterday.
Yeah, I made a flyer. It's kind of silly with, you know, lights, camera, and action.
All right. Representative Bright, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yeah, I just wanted to make mention that last Monday, I spent some time with the 911 dispatchers at the Groton Town Police Department. And those people are unbelievable. They work 12-hour shifts. There's only nine of them and three part-timers. And they really need people, so if you know of anyone that might be interested in becoming a 911 dispatcher, they could really use the help. So I just wanted to put that out, so. And if anyone's interested and you wanted to spend some time with them, you can do it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk just mentioned that there's a lot of job openings, so if you go on the town of Groton website, under job postings, I think it's under Human Services, you can find all of the jobs that are open right now. All right, anything else under other business? Representative Wells?
Well, I'm glad you're here. I had an excellent interview with Eric, the Shenandoah Golf Club manager, and Shen is celebrating its 125th anniversary. And this might be a good opportunity or a good impetus to get the course on the State and National Register of Historic Places. We looked into it once before, and the director of the State Historic Preservation Office came to. came down, looked at the course, she had done a course on the Cape, and she thought the course was a good candidate. And the cost then was about, it would cost about $16,000, the state would pay half. So, you know, maybe 20, if you want the brass plaque, you gotta pay for it yourself. But this is, it's a little hard to run this through Parks and Rec, because they've got a listed to-do list, and you waive 16,000 or 20,000, even if it's only half of that, they're gonna think, oh, all the things I could do with that. So maybe it's something for economic development to look at, because it does, history sells, I don't know, I've noticed Upton Base up in Burnett's Corners, and I noticed their website, they say, "We're located in historic Burnett's Corners." And when you pull into Mystic, it's historic Mystic, although most of the history of Mystic is in Old Mystic. You know, George Washington, Ben Franklin, and a couple of other early presidents passed through or spent the night in Old Mystic, but Mystic was, you know, downriver. Anyway, so it might be something to consider and, you know, put forward.
Okay. What is the date for the 125th anniversary? Representative Wells, do you know what the date is for the anniversary? Is there a celebration? Is there a date for the anniversary? Is there some sort of celebration?
I haven't heard of anything. I don't think so, is there, not that I know of yet anyways. I think right now we're just focusing on the video.
Okay. Perfect.
There could be something later.
Anybody else have any other business? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn. Representative Adams, seconded by Representative Chase, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. So everybody, just so you're aware, there is...